For all who care to join me, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Betty. I'd like to read our board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. And I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak? We're gonna wait till we see if anyone else has come. Seeing that there's no one, we'd like to invite Kim Peters, our superintendent of Recreation and Parks. Hi.
Hi. It's been a while. I do try to come and update, and there's been some exciting stuff. I did put like a little memo, because I don't want to bore you with too many things, but after I started asking my program directors for all the partnership things that have happened in the last six months, they just kept coming. So, what I was mainly here, and first, thank you for adding me to the agenda. I know it's super-long agenda items. And for those who I haven't met, my name's Kim Peters. I'm the superintendent for the rec. I have four kids attend Rutland. They all four graduated from here, and they all four chose the path of college, and three out of the four have graduated and moved on. So, we had a great, I've had a great experience with Rutland. I'm also the volunteer assistant varsity coach with Lori McCollum. We're missing our banquet tonight, but that's okay. Okay. So, I just put like a little, you know, little paragraph in here. What I wanted to do today was to do some special thanks for what the school district has done for us, and then just kind of talk about some of the things that we also provide to the school districts, from anywhere from kindergarten all the way up to high school age. So, I will read this, just because I know it's on PEG TV. As a superintendent for the Recreation Department, I want to take a moment to express my deep appreciation for the incredible partnership that helps make our community stronger. The collaboration between the Recreation Department and the school district is invaluable in providing meaningful opportunities for our students. From recreational programs to sport leagues, fitness initiatives, special events, we are able to offer students opportunities. These opportunities are made possible because of the dedication and hard work of administrators, coaches, program directors, and staff across both departments. I'd like to extend my heartfelt, heartfelt thanks to everyone who takes the time to answer my calls, brainstorm ideas, and bring new programs to life. Whenever I receive a grant or thinking about something that we could provide to the kids, I make a phone call. And in fact, Carrie back there was like, can I talk to you about something else that we have? So, we're always looking for those opportunities. But most recently, I wanted to do just some special thanks, things that have happened. I wanted to thank the Rutland High School Football Program, the Lift-a-thon, for their very generous donation. Of course, this money goes directly to our students. We plan to spend all of it in the next six months, providing a very low cost to all of our winter programs and then spring offerings. So, very gracious that they thought of the rec department to donate that money to. A very special thanks to the Key Club, which is up and running again. Jamie Nichols helped arrange volunteers for our Halloween race and Halloween parade. Over 20 students came, high school students came to help, and I can tell you for sure, we could not have done what we did without them. We, as you know, the Halloween parade, it was with good weather. Those volunteers were phenomenal. They showed up on time, they showed up early, and they stayed the whole time. So, I really wanted to give a special thanks to them. We've always worked with the Key Club, and it's just, we're so happy it's back, and we're working with them. And then thanking all of our student athletes who volunteer to work with recreation through sports, through trainings, through events. I mean, right now, I actually just ran back to the rec because I forgot the papers. And four high school boys, basketball, are in there helping with our clinics with the kids, and that's volunteer work that they're doing, along with two coaches that were there as well, working with athletes on the court. Community service, so important to build our community. We are continuously providing high school partnerships opportunities through community service opportunities. We get last-minute calls sometimes for the National Arts Society or other things that they do need to do for applications. We also offer employment opportunities. Many of the athletes and kids that are in theater will come back and want to give back to the rec. There's some other stuff there. We, you know, we've worked with the place student, with the place program too, with all of them, the school-to-work place internships. We usually have two or three place interns every year. And we really appreciate that, and we hope that they get what they need out of it as well. And then, I help do the Yes Plan at the end of the lifeguard class. We get 20 to 40 kids, and those kids can work for us. They might work for Rutland Town Pool, or even sometimes Tapestry, or some other camps around the area. And then, just on the back page, it's just more items that we're doing with our kindergarten through eighth grade. Something that I did want to really mention today too was, over the summer, I had applied for a Vermont After-School Grant and did receive that. And so, any middle school city resident, sixth grade to eighth grade, received free, completely free membership to the pool and to the rec center. So, hopefully, we'll be able to provide that again. My goal was complete 100% participation, which would have been about 400 kids, and we had just about 300. So, I was really happy with that. And then, toward the end, if they were coming, we would just let them go in. So, we're hoping to be able to do that again. Just recently, we started renting out the Vermont Achievement Center. And so, what that means for the community is swim lessons, but also open swim on Saturdays. And I reached out to Megan Martian, asked, hey, would part of that behavioral, the school that, where they get the rewards, would you want to give out free passes for the kids to come? And these are middle school kids that know our lifeguards, and so, we're partnered with them, and they're giving those out at the little store that they have. But lots of stuff in there. I hope you enjoy reading it, and it will be out there on our website as well. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I'm, well, I will qualify it by saying that I'm biased, because I am in sport, and we are excellent community partners in a number of ways. But I think if we look at our Portrait of a Graduate, and we have wellness as one of our key tenants of our strategic plan, I think that our partnerships with Rutland Recreation are extremely valuable for our kids and for the community as a whole. Recreation can really be the backbone of a community in terms of its wellness and ability to really pull kids away from bad choices. So, thanks for all you guys do.
All seven of the goals, I think, are in there.
Yeah, right, yeah, exactly, right, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we turn to our student representative reports.
With October focused on collaboration at RAS, we saw countless opportunities for students to work together to achieve a goal. We had an amazing turnout for our parent-teacher conferences, and an equally impressive number of families showed up to view our Halloween parade. November focuses on gratitude, and here at RAS, we have much to be grateful for. We appreciate all the families who completed our first family engagement survey. We want to give a big shout-out to Mr. Adam Brewer, for being recognized as the recipient of this year's Making It Happen Award. RAS held a school-wide vote for our first school-wide celebration, watching a movie in the auditorium on the big screen, won by a landslide. Reminder for all families that our RAS food pantry is open every Thursday from 2:30 to 4:00. Lastly, this week is World Kindness Week, with World Kindness Day being celebrated tomorrow, November 13th. October was busy with parent-teacher conferences, the Fall Festival, the Kindergarten Spieltrip, to the fire department, and our Halloween parade. We held our Paws Character Trait Assembly for the trait of mindfulness, and high classes modeled different mindfulness strategies they used to start their day off. November's Paws Character Trait is all about kindness. We recently held our annual STEAM Day on November 8th, organized by our STEAM coach, Laura. This year, our STEAM Day expanded to a full-day event with 14 different stations. We had the opportunity to partner with the Mint, Rutland Free Library, Wonder Feet, and Rutland Rec. We're looking forward to our upcoming PTC Grocery Bingo on November 19th, and our school-wide Thanksgiving lunch on Friday, November 22nd. Be sure to check out this month's Family Engagement STEAM Challenge posted on Seesaw and in the monthly newspaper. This month, Northwest had many celebrations. We had a Kickstarter assembly to our Stafford Bus Campaign with Captain Credit Union. Our school-wide goal is to collect 2,000 items. We had our annual Halloween parade with the staff theme of Pac-Man. Northwest has sent out the first of three family engagement surveys. We read each survey and make changes based on the needs of our community. We appreciate the response rate and encourage these surveys be completed. We know the holidays can be hard for families. Please reach out to our school calendar if you need support. We work to connect families with the necessary resources, and this time of year can be tricky. Please see the latest segment of the RCPS Learning Lounge on PEG TV. This month, we interviewed students from the Japanese exchange program. This was such an amazing segment host.
At Stafford Technical Center, on Tuesday, November 5th, all students and staff participated in our annual day of community service by raking the yards of about 28 local residents that need a helping hand. Our culinary arts program made an apple pie for each homeowner, and then prepared a pizza, l'huion, for all participants. This year's T-shirt, that was worn by all, was created by Dorian Lester, an Otter Valley student in digital arts. In a recent alumni survey, this day of community service is overwhelmingly one of their best memories of their time at Stafford, so we are happy to continue the tradition. In late October, Stafford was awarded a $200,000 donation from the GE Aerospace Foundation to purchase two pieces of equipment to support the workforce development in the manufacturing sector. We were thrilled to welcome GE Aerospace representatives, along with US Senator Peter Welch at Stafford, to celebrate this award and the programs and students it will benefit. It is especially noteworthy that Stafford received the largest donation given by the foundation across all countries they serve. First trimester at Rowland Middle School ends on Friday, and students are in the process of taking the second round of Fastbridge Benchmark Assessments. Students and teachers have worked hard this year, and initial results for math looked promising. ELA will continue testing this week. Students are also taking Round Two of the SAVERS, our social-emotional screener, and the focus for advisory this month is bullying prevention. RMS took part in hosting events for our Hanamaki Exchange Partners through the RISE program. Chris Chapman facilitated another successful visit, and our students were inspired by our exchange partners' presentation about their city and culture. Many of our students have begun looking into the various exchange programs available to them. RMS continues to pilot Securely Pass and Spotlight Behavior Management. Both programs provide important data that will be used to create interventions to improve student belonging and outcomes. The RMS Drama Club presented This Is Your Brain on social media Friday night to an audience of around 50. Congratulations to all involved. For Rowland High School, I am pleased to report that the McClure Foundation will support one of our Yes Plan work-based learning classes with a $2,500 mini-grant. Our work-based learning teachers, Jen McNeil and Kim Rensum, have fostered a relationship with the McClure Foundation and the Hub in Rutland. As a result of this grant, students will be able to take a course that will teach them about finance and entrepreneurship. Congratulations to Ethan Wildwick, who was selected as a state finalist by the Vermont State Athletic Directors Association in recognition of his sportsmanship, leadership, and academic success. Ethan will now move on to the national round for consideration as a national finalist. Special recognition goes to Cindy Trevino, who was named the Rutland High School UVM Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Trevino, as the lead teacher in an alternative program, is tirelessly devoted to her students. She arrives early and stays late to assist her students in every way. She gives them whatever they need in order to stay engaged in school, a warm coat, and budge in the right direction, a meal, but more than anything else, she gives herself. She is truly deserving of this honor.
Thank you. Any questions for the reps? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And we now will move to our RHS Program of Studies, and Mr. Lartola.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Brett Lartola, I'm the new associate principal at the high school, and I think you all know this guy. We are here to present the notable changes to the RHS Program of Studies for next year, '25-'26. I don't know if any of you have seen a copy of the use line around somewhere, but every year, usually about in January, we come out with the Program of Studies for the following school year before students start registering for classes. And the Program of Studies includes all of our course offerings and some other programs and other information, things like that. Each year, our departments review their course offerings in the Program of Studies and try to kind of maybe change things up based on student needs and what students are interested in for both graduation requirements and their likes of courses. So, I guess I can just roll right into this. Does everybody have a copy? So, first up is a new English Word class. The English Word class will fulfill the 12th grade English requirement. We have several English Word options for students to try to keep them engaged as they near graduation. Some of those options revolve around British literature, Shakespeare. So, this is kind of a hybrid of that. It's more Western literature with some of that other stuff mixed in as well. Then we have, we move down to Fine Arts. So, we have a new Advanced Ceramics II class. This is really in response to a high interest in our Advanced Ceramics I class. A lot of students were requesting to take the Advanced Ceramics I again, or do Advanced Ceramics II as an independent study. So, the art teachers and the department just decided to open it up to everybody, and then, because interest was so high, that way more students could access the course. The next one is, I'm actually kind of excited about the next one. It sounds really cool. Songwriting and music production. The, one of our music teachers is proposing this one. I think it's a way for, to capture student interest in a way that doesn't involve, necessarily doesn't involve playing an instrument. So, producing music, things like that, and kind of writing music, and writing songs, and things like that. It just seems really cool, and we're really excited about that one. Similarly, to the music course, we have Costumes for Stage in Life. I will give it to her. Our theater teacher is really great about coming up with new ideas to try to get kids more engaged in theater. As some of you may know, as is the case for me, acting and being on stage is a little bit intimidating, if you will. So, I think this course kind of tries to garner that interest for students who may not feel comfortable on stage, and this is more kind of a backstage-on-the-side, make the costumes, things like that, to try to get that, both get that elective credit, and then just be involved in theater that way as well. Intro to Strings is, I think ideally, the idea behind this was to get students that are coming from our sending schools or other schools that don't have orchestra all the way up through, interested in orchestra and allowing them to learn how to play something like a violin, or bass, or cello, or things like that, that they didn't have the opportunity to do beforehand, before they got to Rutland High School. So, that was something that the music department also proposed as well. And then, the last thing we have is Advanced Robotics, which, again, similarly to the ceramics course, was offered in response to a high interest in the Intro Robotics course. As you may know, we have a lot of interest in robotics, both in our buildings, all the way up through, and then with our iBots team as well. So, we're offering this course again, again, to meet the interests and the needs of students. And it's also one of the courses that will help fulfill part of students' STEM endorsements, as part of our endorsement programs. And I just want to make a note that none of these courses will add any extra staff or anything like that. We basically offer all of our courses within, based on student requests and within the capacity that we have as a staff.
I just had a question. You just mentioned endorsements. Could you explain what that means? I know what it means on a college level, but...
So, we have two, and those are actually in here too, if you look at an old one or the next year's one. We have the two STEM endorsements, sorry, two endorsements. One is a Global Studies endorsement, and one is a STEM endorsement. So, kids can sign up for one or both, and kind of tailor their studies to meet the requirements that are laid out in there. And it's a, what do I want to say? The endorsement shows up on their transcript, on their diploma.
So, are all students required to choose one or the other?
Nope, it's totally optional, yeah. It's totally optional. And basically, you know, like a STEM course, you, there's various requirements in here. A STEM endorsement, you would take a math and a science every year. You'd take a Yes Plan, that's a STEM Yes Plan. You would take, you know, some electives that kind of involve that endorsement area as well.
Those endorsements would likely help them in college, I'm assuming.
Correct, yeah. And I'm not, you know, saying all the requirements. They're all listed out in here, but to that effect, yeah.
Thank you.
Can any kid take either endorsement or both? There's not an application, you just decide that you can do it?
You have to meet the, like, you have to take the courses and meet the requirements.
To receive it, but to go down that path. Anyone can go down that path. I also wanted to ask, have there been any classes removed from the curriculum?
Yeah, that is, that is part of what the department does too, when they review each year. They look at past data, and, you know, if, and again, it's based on student interest. So, we do have courses that we've offered in the past that haven't garnered any interest. We usually leave them in there for, you know, three to four years to see if they can gain any traction, and usually, if they don't, then we'll kind of replace them with these that we're offering tonight.
Just a quick question. Is the Program of Studies available online?
It is, yeah. So, what we will do is, we'll print hard copies for either students that can't access it, or to give out to like sending schools or incoming ninth-grade students, things like that. But it will be, there'll be a PDF on our website, and I'm pretty sure this one is still on the website, the 24-25, if you want to access it that way.
Can I take the costumes course?
I would really like to. I'd really like to take that course.
You can do the sewing, sure.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if anyone hasn't checked out the ceramics, the art studio, there's a kiln, and they're welding equipment. It is, and they just got new tables, and it is really, really cool. Definitely worth checking out. Okay, superintendent's report, please.
Superintendent's report is halfway done. Amelia and Maya grabbed a couple things from me, so I'll cover. I just wanted, the Adam Brewer Award, the teacher from Rowland Intermedia School, that's a national organization, ISTI, operating through the statewide organization, Vitalearn. And there, so that's a pretty prestigious award to be able to get, the Making It Happen Award. I just, inspiration from Patricia. There are about 800 kids, or it's 800 educators around the world who have received this award. So, he, Adam is one of 800. And I think we have another one, another teacher in the district who received the award a few years ago, Claudia Renfro. So, it's pretty good recognition to be able to get that. So, congrats to Adam. You mentioned the award of the grant of $200,000 from General Electric Aerospace. That was an amazing gift to Stafford and to further the opportunities for kids. I think Melissa has plans for what she's going to buy, two machines, or maybe three possibly? And with the help of GE to help guide us on what would be good use of that money. And as you mentioned, I think we were the highest, or Stafford is the highest recipient in the country for those awards. That was quite an interesting day. Great, and thanks to Senator Walsh and Mayor Dungus for coming to celebrate with us. Did we mention the Supreme Court coming to Rutland High School? I don't think you said that. In a previous meeting, did I, am I repeating something myself?
No, that was before they came.
That was before, they were coming.
They were coming.
You weren't here.
Oh, we were coming. Okay, so they're here.
They're banned, they're gone.
I just wanted to thank the Supreme Court for coming to that. It was a lot of work for the high school to set up, so congrats to Craig and that team. But I was able to attend part of it. Stephanie was there, Charlene was there. I don't know if anybody else was able to see it, but it was really, really interesting. And I haven't, I haven't seen a Supreme Court case actually being run through like that before. There were three real cases. And we had a large number of kids attend throughout the course of those three different sessions. So, it was a great learning experience for the kids, and we appreciate that the court was willing to do that. They travel around the state and give people the opportunity, and people from the public could come in and watch it. I wanted to congratulate the athletic teams for a nice season that we had this year. It was a lot of good success. And it's hard to mention everything that happened over the last month or so, but we did not, do we mention the STEAM Day? I don't think we mentioned that. You did mention that.
Yes.
I forget that one too, forget it. That was, that was really fun to watch, though. We had a lot of great community partnerships, working with Northeast. So, thanks, thanks to the community for helping us with that. All right, we'll talk, can we talk about Hanamaki? Can we talk about that a little bit?
We can.
We did mention it a little bit, I heard you guys talk about Ishidoriya. We wanted to, so, we were able to go to Hanamaki to celebrate the 35th anniversary of that partnership between Rutland City and that community. We wanted to tell a little bit about it. And Bianca, will you control the slideshow for us? We thought we'd show you a few family pictures. It's like our family vacation. We just wanted to talk about it in general. And one of the things that, to start out, to start out with, was there's a gift-giving culture in Japan that, when you meet a person, maybe for the first time or meeting them again, there's a process that you go through to try to make the meeting more memorable and establish a relationship. So, you want to tell us about what happens in that?
So, there are many traditions and cultures in Japan, and one of the main, one of a major culture is gift-giving. And so, we were, we wanted to be thoughtful before we even went there. We had a discussion about Bianca, Bill, and myself, you know, to be prepared for our gift-giving. We wanted to make sure we had us represented properly. So, we ended up taking 150 gifts, small little gifts, envelopes. And in this envelope, customarily, a gift, it's very, it's not an extravagant gift that they give. It's just a token for their, it's a token of appreciation for you. A lot of times, when you meet someone for the first time, so it's not something that's very extravagant. But we did come, and we put, we had a pen and a maple leaf, a wooden token, and we gave them a lucky penny, and put them all in an envelope, sealed them all up. And it's customary, when you give a gift, you give a gift with two hands, for modesty. And then, when you receive the gift, you receive it with two hands as well. And a lot of times, you, it's customary to reject the gift at first, because we do that normally, oh, no, 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 thank you. You know, but politely, you would do that, and then you would accept the gift with both hands. Typically, you're not going to open up the gift right there. You would take it home and open it in private. So, you can imagine, and also, it's usually, it was wrapped, they're really cute wrappings that they use, little Japanese papers. So, you can imagine, we've met a lot of people. So, we got a lot of... So we got a lot of nice goodies to have. A lot of times it's food, it's snacks. So we, we're, you know, in my hotel room and I'm eating my snacks. It was really cute to have a lot of little snacks. So it was, it was nice. And it, even when they came here a couple of weeks ago, the Japanese people, exchange students came and the, one of the chaperones had given a little gift. Like given me a little gift because I came to visit them when they were here. And it's just, it's such a nice social thing that they do to present a gift. So what I'd like to do beyond, on behalf of Bill and Bianca and myself, is I'd like to present each of you with a gift. And this is exactly the gift that you would get.
No, 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 it's okay.
You can just accept the gift. You don't have to say.
Two hands, good job.
Thank you.
Arigato.
Don't trip on the cord.
And that's what they, that's the gift giving.
I love it. It's cool.
And everywhere we went, they did that. And it was nice because it's just, it's just a little token. It's nothing extravagant. So don't.
Really nice part of the culture.
It's very great. And everything in there is from Japan and you would, green is the color. So we have a lot of green in your envelope. It's very lucky. That's it.
So, yeah, just a couple of slides. We, we're talking, you can go to the next one. I think we, we have three partnerships in the, in the school district with schools abroad. One is in India. That's, that was just set up recently, as you might remember. That's the trip from last year. We have a partnership with a, a new school in Germany. This is, they, they are in Heidelberg area, not too far from Heidelberg. We had one in Munich and then I think then we switched to this one. And these two partnerships are really school to school. And, you know, possibly maybe that could be something that would broaden. But what's unique about the, this partnership with Hanamaki is it goes back all the way to 1985, when they first, when they first started talking about it. And, you know, all these years, now we're almost up to 40 years of this partnership with this, with this community. And it's not just a partnership between schools, it's a partnership with community to community. So I think we, I was, this is a, a wall in a community center in Ishidoria that we visited, which is part of Hanamaki. That was the, the original partnership was, was with Ishidoria. And we, as we were walking through this, we're like, oh, there's so and so, there's Mary Moran. You can, you can see all these different pictures of these people through the ages. I couldn't read it very well, but, but it was, it was great to see how much they value this partnership with us. And it, it was pretty incredible. And so they talk about the history of Rutland, the location, the geography, all different aspects of what Rutland is like. And then the timeline talks about the different partnerships, events that happened over, over the course of almost 40 years. So there's a, a real historical significance to this partnership. It was, it was really important to them. And there were a lot of people now over almost 40 years that are, that have been connected to this on both sides of, of the ocean. So it was so important that, I think around 20 years ago, maybe 22 or so, they buried a, a little time capsule. And right behind that plaque, which actually lists out the agreement between the two communities, they had, they had a little spot where they buried that time capsule. We dug, they dug it up upon our arrival. They'd been waiting for this. They took out all the materials and we saw some copies of the Rutland Herald in there. There was just a lot of things that were, were from, you know, from Rutland and from their community as well. And it all survived amazingly. It was a little bit moist, but it didn't deteriorate. And then you could see.
Oh, Lord.
We could, we could recognize all the folks that were in these mag, in the different publications. It was great. So you could really get a sense of what, how important this was to, to their community and how important it is to ours as well. So we were able to spend time visiting the community. We got to see a lot of cultural parts of the community. And we got to visit two schools. We got to visit Ishidoria Middle School. They put on a, an exhibition for us. We felt like real celebrities. And they put on a dance exhibition, some music. And then we, they were getting ready for a school-wide choral contest. And so every single class in the building was practicing their singing that afternoon.
That's cool.
They were really good. It was pretty impressive. We got to visit a preschool in the, in the community. And they, they asked us not to show pictures of, of the little kids, so I don't have that in there. But they were great, great little kids, cute kids. But they, for that, for us, they put on a, they showed us how a Japanese traditional tea ceremony took place. On the far left is the woman who taught us the process. And then the kids came and helped us conduct the process. It was really fun. So that was at, at the end of the ceremony. And there she was, leading us through the, through the steps. So we got a, a great picture of the culture. And I think the kids who visit Hanamaki get to go through the same process as well. We had to introduce, introduce ourselves to the preschool kids. And so we had to say what our names were and spell it out because they were practicing their ABCs. They sang the ABC song to us. And then we had to say what our job was. And so Bianca, I don't think they were going to be able to figure out what assistant superintendent was. Teacher. We all played rock paper scissors with them. They loved it.
They loved it.
And then Charlene was never going to be able to be clear what a.
I don't know. Yeah. You said money. Yeah, I guess.
Which is very impressive for preschool students.
We got to visit what their version of what Wonderfeet is. And, and they, that was just a really wonderful little kids museum. It was such a fun place to be. It was, as you can see, engaging for all the adults as well.
Really unique ideas.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe that's, that was something that we thought, maybe that could come over here as well, some of those ideas. And we had a couple of big dinners with the, two different parts of the community. And this is the superintendent of the school district. And he had given us a gift, so we brought him this plate. I don't, I don't know if you can see it so well. It has an image of the, the mountains of, of Rutland. And there's a big R. That was made by two of our students, Sophia Perron and Camille Woods. And they did that in their creative structure class with the advanced ceramics. So they basically did that on their own and created that. So that's now hanging in the.
Those coats they gave us, they're called happy coats. And one side says Ishidoria and the other side says Rutland City.
That's cool.
We wore those to that dinner. And this is the, the mayor of Hanamaki and he got a Rutland football hat. So, yeah, it was, it was, the people were fantastic. We brought them the Rutland flag. And they really appreciated having a connection to us. It was a lot of fun. So that was, that was the large group. So I think the, the benefit of this, I mean, in, in some ways it sounds maybe obvious, but the, the connections of kid to kid and, and having these, these relationships developed with, between students is just amazing for them. And then it spreads out. I mean, not every kid has been able to travel. But our students get to, get to learn more about the culture when they come to visit us, vice versa. When they came, when their kids came over here, they had put on different, you know, displays and, and chances to meet and be able to understand what the Japanese culture is all about. And so you start to, it starts to seep into the school culture a little bit. And you start to, it's an educational opportunity that I think is really hard to beat, as well as with our other partnerships. So as we've tried to work towards making sure that we have a global perspective in our curriculum and look for opportunities for kids to understand, develop understanding of global issues and, and, and just understand cultures better. This is a real important part of what we do. And the more we can do this, our hope is that we can expand it even further and, and develop it a little bit more. I might have one more picture, Bianca, I think. And they, they learn from our culture as well. That was a few years ago. They love Halloween, so it's really fun.
That's my daughter up there.
Oh, is it?
Next to the, yeah, in the white shirt.
So we just wanted to give you a short briefing about what that was all about and, and have you have a chance to see some of this. And I'm going to steal a gift.
Yeah.
All right, there we go.
But they, but they do have it displayed, like, like when we were in the school, like one of the main glass cases on the, on the, on the main floor, right? In the, the school has all kinds of pictures of Rutland people. And so they, they really value this exchange over there. And they, they display all of Rutland City things in the cases and they were really.
It's a beautiful green marble bench that's over there. That, we have the same bench at the high school as well. Just created at the same time. And it's right there in the middle of the school.
And as Bill mentioned, you know, when the students were here a couple of weeks ago, they presented to all of Rutland Middle School, they visited elementary classrooms, they visited high school classrooms. So we're really looking for opportunities to expand so that a larger number of our students can be actively involved with the exchange. And it, it's, it's pretty special. And we anticipate hosting a delegation from Hanamaki in about two years when it'll be the 40th anniversary. Even though this was the 35th anniversary trip, it was delayed because of COVID, so.
I feel like many people came out to see us, to greet us, to, just to say hello because they were so interested in keeping this in, in fostering the exchange. There were lots of people that came out. So it was really nice.
So thanks for spending a little, little time with that.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Really impressive.
Yeah, that's exciting.
So moving on to Melissa and our Stafford budget presentation.
Good evening. We are here once again to present to you for the first time the FY26 budget for Stafford. So I'll give you a little bit about the process, the background, like I do every year, and then a few of the details. So just for those of you that are new, we have a regional advisory board which guides Stafford. Rutland City Public Schools, the School Fissures, is our governing board. As part of the RAB, we have several subcommittees, one being the Finance Committee, which is made up of all the superintendents of the high schools that we serve. So each year, that committee gets together and they kind of charge us with where they're looking for a tuition increase to be. So this year, we were charged with developing a budget that fell in a four to five percent range, which I'm sure, you know, hearing ahead last month, that is challenging to do with rising healthcare costs unknowns as far as, you know, bargaining units and things like that. So we worked on that. You know, some facts to keep in mind. Salaries and benefits alone is about 70% of our operating budget, so not a lot of control over that. And in order to move the needle on our budget by 1%, that's about $40,000 in cuts in order to do that. So Kate, our very first, we always joke, it's the very first faculty meeting of the year and we're handing out budget packets for the next school year because our budget timeline is so much earlier. So we asked our staff to, again, present a budget and submit a request that is going to meet the needs of students, but without any extras. And so the original budget that they submitted, we always entered in as they've requested. And with all of the, the changes, it was at about 10.2%. So obviously we had to make some cuts. So one of the things that we have a program committee, which is part of the RAB. And in conversations, you may recall that last year we had paused our video communications program. The program committee made the recommendation that we close that program effective next school year officially. When we brought that information to the RAB Finance Committee, they agreed with that. And so that is a recommendation that we'll be making for you to vote on at the December meeting. And we built our budget around the assumption that that program would be closed. That immediately took off about 125,000 from our, from our budget. The other thing to keep in note is that this board, along with our regional advisory board, last year had approved us starting a pre-tech exploratory program for the 2526 year. That is still in the budget. That is about, I would say about 85% grant funded. So it's a very small portion that goes into the local. At the December meeting, we will be sharing with you as part of the Vermont Agency of Education approval process, a spoken sequence for that program that we'll be looking for you to approve that we can submit to the Agency of Education. Because you are the governing board, you make the decision as to whether that gets approved or not. So a little things. So as I mentioned, it takes 40,000 to cut 1%. So we were able to take some off the top for our video program, but we needed to make some other cuts. So I just want to highlight some of the areas that we made cuts to. And it's never an easy decision because we're looking at how it's integrated and learning in the programs. So we were able to cut about $45,000 in equipment with the hopes that we will secure grants to replace those. A lot of the equipment we requested replacing aging equipment. We have a lot of equipment that, as you can imagine, is expensive. When you have $200,000 donation that's only buying potentially two pieces of equipment, it gets expensive fast. We also are looking at about $12,000 in supplies. And so, you know, we think we'll be able to make it through, but it doesn't allow for a lot of new learning. So it's kind of like the status quo of what we're doing. About 27.27,000 in professional services. That is contracting particularly in our health cares, health cares program with outside resources for supervision and clinical rotations. What it will mean is that our instructors will just have to spend longer time out in the field. We always try to expedite it by contracting per diem with some RNs. So we've kind of cut that out. And then we worked really closely with Patricia Agner and her team as far as computer replacement plans so that we never had a huge hit in one year. But we did have to make the tough decision to cut about $114,000 in computer replacements. Doesn't mean the need goes away. It just postpones it for another year or two. And that was mainly in our engineering program where we have to have desktops and laptops to operate a lot of the software. And they're high-end machines, which come with a high-end price. And then there were some other areas, you know, textbooks, about 6,000 repairs and maintenance. We're going to be hopeful that things don't break down, so about 5,000 there and so on. So we, you know, the other area that we put together was a building repair plan that we really have been trying to stay religious, religious to. When I came to Stafford about 10 years ago, there was no building improvement plan in place for us. And we're a 50-year-old building that's aging. And so we've really been trying, you know, diligent in trying to maintain the building as is. So what we've decided to do, and with the support of the Finance Committee, to split the cost of some of the building repairs to stay on target, once again with the local budget and our reserve fund that we have for Stafford. So the planned improvements, if this budget is approved, would be replacing the last of the 1974 ceilings in some of our classrooms, replacing the flooring and the first and second floor hallways, which does involve asbestos abatement. So that makes it a little bit pricier. And then replacing the original exhaust system in our culinary arts program. So it's lasted for 50 years, but it's starting to show age. And so that is something that we're looking for. So that's kind of like the background on how we got to the budget that Kate will explain. A few other things just to explain that are a little bit different about our budget. How towns are billed is based on a six semester average. So in the packet that we sent to you all, on page six, it kind of reviews for you how we bill out. So first, technical education, we're required to do enrollment counts every fall and every spring, October 15th and March 15th. And then we look at three years worth of data and that's something called six semester average. When we take the counts, it's based on the student's town of residence as to where it gets billed. It's not just based Rutland High School, but it's broken down Rutland City, Mendon, Chittenden and all of that. And then their, their bill, that town is based on that six semester average. So I always like to highlight Rutland City because obviously we are looking at the taxpayers of Rutland City. This year, Rutland City has 50 students enrolled at Stafford. But you're being, Rutland City will be billed for 55.01 because that is the six semester average for Rutland City. Last year, Rutland City had 57 students that were enrolled and were billed for 66.358 students. So actually Rutland City will be billed less this year by 11 students, even though there's only seven students left. So a little bit of savings there for you all. So that is done for each town. So, that is done for each town.
I'm sorry, Melissa, can I just ask you a question while you're there? And it, I guess, the way it was here, it looked like it was a bigger decrease in city enrollment. But do you know why, do you have any idea why the enrollment is down?
Well, I think this is just Rutland City. If you look at the other outlying towns, Rutland Town and things, those, you know, sometimes have numbers increasing. It's just kind of the shifting of where people are moving and living.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. As we mentioned earlier, we have to have our budget submitted really early in order for each of our partner high schools to have our tuition rate for calculating their budget, which makes it a little bit complicated because there's a lot of unknowns at the time when we're creating our budget. The healthcare costs that aren't always set, obviously negotiations haven't happened. So, the CTE funding laws do allow for what they call a 3% window. So, if we were to under budget, we do have the, the right to ask towns for up to 3% of an increase we could bill out. And then, if we, you know, we're overconfident, we overestimate, then towns would get anything above 3% back. So, we would return that fund. So, it does protect the towns when we have to have a budget in so early. So, we always like to remind people of that. Perkins, the Perkins Grant is a large portion of our operating expenses. It's projected next year to be about $346,000. We never know the exact amount until about April. So, again, we're doing our best guess estimate on what that will be. It's typically in that ballpark. On pages three and four of the packet, you'll kind of see the overarching themes of where we're looking at it. You may remember our really long presentations that are Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment last year that we have to prepare every two years. And basically, that process outlines what we can and cannot spend our funding on from Perkins. So, it's pretty structured. So, there's not a lot of changes from what we had anticipated last year. We'll continue offering hopefully the second year of sponsors program, continuing offering the second instructor for our electrical and plumbing program. The big change is adding in that pre-tech exploratory, which will be operational next year. So, we're excited about that. So, now, I'm gonna turn it over to Kate, who will walk you through line by line of it.
I will be referencing page five in your budget packets. So, we'll go through our expenditures and revenues and do a breakdown for you of how that all calculates out to our annual tuition rate. As Melissa mentioned, we start the process with our budget in September. And we might be expensive, but we are fiscally responsible and we credit that to our program staff and instructional staff because our goal is to continue to provide the education that we're known for and we put our students' best interests first. So, when we're looking at trying to make cuts, it's what's in the best interest of our students and our programs. So, as Melissa mentioned, our Perkins Grant allocation is roughly, we're using what we currently have, $346,000. And when we're creating the budget, we use the FY25 base education rate. And this is also used to help calculate the overhead assistance that we receive from the state in our revenue line. So, if you look at page five and go down to the direct expenditures, this represents an increase from FY25 to 26 of 5.2%. With healthcare costs increasing and, and contract negotiations, again, we were trying to go within that 4% to 5% increase that our RAB had guided us towards. So, and anything above that, like Melissa had mentioned, we did our best to reallocate those needs to either grant funds or our reserve fund for the building. So, with that in mind, our total expenditures increased to 4.9% comparing it to the previous fiscal year. So, that's about a 0.7% increase. And as we move down the spreadsheet, our revenues are up this year for, or next year for FY26, 7.4%. And that is the result of the increase in our state salary assistance, a slight increase in our special ed billing and our overhead assistance that we receive. So, with all of this combined, our net expenditures have an increase of 3.8% overall comparatively. And that generates an FY26 tuition rate of $22,260. And this is calculated by taking that net expenditure number and dividing it by our six semester average, which Melissa outlined at the beginning. So, and this fell within our guidelines created by our regional advisory board. So, our tuition rate is at an increase of 4.5% for, for fiscal year '26. And then, Melissa will go to the next steps.
So, just how that compares, we always, on page, I believe it's page seven of your packet, we always put together kind of where Stafford is compared to where we always text in the pack of state. We always hover between fifth and eighth. And so, we're anticipating that we will be in the middle of the pack again comparatively as far as our tuition rate. You'll see that some of the tech centers for this fiscal year had some major jumps, you know, 20.64% increase. I have no idea how they can get a budget like that passed, but they do. So, they had some huge jumps in tuition. I thought even the AOE website had some typos, so I actually called the directors and they said, "This is accurate." And they said, "Oh, it's in there." So, one being 47.99% increase as far as their tuition rate compared to last year. So, that was not a typo on the AOE website. So, next steps, our full RAB will receive the same presentation on December 4th. And then, we will come back to this board on December 10th and entertain a motion for the approval of the budget. In addition to that, approval for us to receive our Perkins funds. And again, the amount is unknown, so we just look for a motion for you to actually approve us accepting those funds to be used as the CLNA outlines, as well as approval for us to use our reserve funds for that deferred maintenance that I spoke about. We'll also have some action items on the file approval of our video communications program being closed and on that scope and sequence and the credit recommendation for the pre-tech exploratory program. So, there'll be lots of action items that hopefully are well planned, nailed and thought out. So, so now, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Shirley.
I just have a quick question, so I'm reading this correctly. So, like you said, the Perkins Grant's coming in in this line item, but this dollar amount here is not for any expenses that are listed up, up, above. It's a, they have its own little thing of listing of expenses that you can spend things on.
So, basically with the Perkins, if it's not, there's lots of layers to it. The simple answer is if it was not mentioned in our Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, which is a year-long study of our school with lots of input from outside stakeholders, if it's not mentioned in that document, we cannot spend the money on it. And that's approved as part of our Perkins Plan by the Vermont Agency of Education to make sure that it's federally compliant. So, there's lots of layers. There's about 12 people at the Agency of Ed that go through our grant looking with different lenses. So, they check first is the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, is everything federally approvable? Does it align with the Vermont State Perkins Plan? And then, they look at the grant to see anything that we're looking to spend money isn't mentioned in our CLNA. So, it's very specific what we can and can't spend money on.
Gotcha.
I know we say this every year, but I want to acknowledge again how much, you know, the scope of both of your responsibilities are enormous. And it is a huge asset to our community and all of our surrounding communities. So, I just want to thank you for your hard work, your dedication and commitment and well done.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Plamenis.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm here to present just a few slides regarding our maintenance capital replacement plan. Just go a little bit into our maintenance budget for FY26. We met in October and I kind of laid out a five-year capital plan and kind of looked at the things that were coming. And then, of course, you have to make some hard decisions, right, when we get into this time of year. So, this was just a snapshot of what we did last year and things that are still ongoing in, in the works. Some of the things are standard, we've been working on a two bus replacement plan, just throwing these bus reviews. And safe on the roads as we travel, duh, you know, it's for north to St. John's Ferry Saturday. It's nice to know we're having, you know, we have safe and reliable buses out there for our students. So, this was a, you know, 1 million budget. So, we're going to go into FY26 and Ted and I kind of spoke in our, my goal, our goal was to try to reduce by about 5% our maintenance budget. And the bulk of that's going to be through our maintenance, I'm sorry, our capital planning. So, as I said, we met in October and looked at kind of the five-year plan. These are some of the more important things and what you'll look at here, and I mentioned in our meeting, was we're going to address things that keep the building maintainable, dry, also address safety and then address those things that don't snowball into more expensive stuff. So, as you look at things like the asphalt parking lot repairs, these are some of the things that have been deferred over the years. We're gonna, if we can dress it a little bit year by year and keep that maintained before they deteriorate more quickly. Melissa mentioned some of the east wing are the first, the flooring. And then, she gets towards the bottom, one of the things we need to address, and just like accounting, we addressed updating our financial system. Some of these systems have become obsolete and we need to update them. So, one of the things we're going to need to address is our access control system. This has been installed for, I think, 15 years or so in the district. It's been added on, it, it's reaching the end of its serviceability. So, our, our recommendation is to upgrade that to a different and newer system. That just means that all the, the basic computer background would need to be replaced. All the cars that are out there would stay the same, all the hardware on the doors would stay the same. There's just more some, some of the background computer chips and software programs that would need to be replaced. But that would cover all of the district and add on some schools that don't have that, like Allen Street currently doesn't have that. And there's some additional doors that we might want to add on to, so it would replace the existing system and upgrade to some schools that don't have it or additional doors there. Some roofs that need to be replaced, I think I mentioned this at Northwest, there's a skylight roof. There's some skylights on the roof, but right now, when it rains or even when it freezes in the wintertime, puddles and, and lakes of ice form up there. That can quickly deteriorate if you're not shedding the water off. Once that one, that water freezes, it freezes and falls and then irrigated water into the building and, and, you know, it's a difficult thing to address. And then, elevator modernization, we talked about this, that our elevators have not been updated for a very long time. So, I'd like to put those in a cycle of the next five years. And one of them that's probably the most used and most important, well, they're all important, but this one is probably the most used is the middle school elevator that services both intermediate and middle school back by the back catwalk. So, that will be on our plan. So, overall, that reduces us to $870,000 in capital replacements. There are some things that I addressed in our capital replacement plan that are smaller. I did include those in our maintenance budget, things like the fence at Intermediate School along the Church Street needs to be replaced. And then, it's Melissa once in the culinary fan. I, I would kind of include that in the maintenance because that is probably going to be around the 20,000 to 30,000 dollar range, a little lower than I expected as I had some conversations with contractors. So, overall, the decrease, basically the capital decrease, capital decrease is 268,000 with a slight maintenance increase. But overall, I think we can reduce by about $162,000 for our overall maintenance budget going into next year. So, I need to add to that, Ted. Does anybody have any questions?
The only other thing that I might add is, is hopefully everybody is aware, is the discussions and the planning that Glenn has described involve many members of the administration. So, for example, when it comes to, you know, ADA accessibility issues, you know, we're involving Pam and Bianca and the appropriate folks and the principals. When it comes to things like flooring, which involves safety, obviously, we're, we're involving the principals. So, part of this is, as Glenn said, as time goes on, getting better, closer cost estimates, which, you know, because we try and make sure we're covered, they tend to come in a little bit lower. But also then, playing with the timing of some of these things where it's not going to create a big lump in the future year, but allows us to maintain some balance and continuity year to year. So, my own impression, based on the conversations we've had across the district, is this is looking pretty close to what we're likely to be including when we come back in December to the finance and the finance committee and the board. It's great work, I really appreciate all that you put into it.
Great, thank you. And just as Ted mentioned, I probably should lead with that, is that these things could flex a little bit as we get better numbers or make the, or make the harder decisions on what it needs to be, or things might come to light even in the next few months.
Sometimes you get into a project and you realize what was more to do there.
Yeah, exactly.
Sort of related, not related, but related, are we entirely ADA compliant?
We are compliant with, as they're built, right? So, we don't have to make any changes unless we go in and start, we did a study with, using ESSER money at the, the middle school, just to understand the, as it's built, it is not compliant, but we're not required to make any changes until we go in and start making any, any changes whatsoever, then we would have to get up to the current code.
As it was built, it's not compliant with today.
Correct.
To have met the standards when it was built.
And if, if it's renovating, something that's not ADA compliant, are there funds available through federal funds?
Anything?
To become?
No, I'm not aware of anything. We even pursued this when we had ESSER funds, that we pushed that forward. Rob was a big champion of that with Pam and we found that the ESSER would not fund that. They would fund the architectural studies, which we did, but would not, the money could not be used for purposes.
So, keep looking, we have a better, it helps.
Well, to me, it begs the next question, which wouldn't fall under your umbrella, is that how significant is that to our kids who have disabilities? Like, how, how is it impacting their days?
And that's why we speak with Bill and Bianca and Pam and the principals to get their judgments. You might recall, well, I'm sorry, I don't know if you were at the building committee meeting in, in October, but for example, when Glenn was talking about elevators, you know, he made the distinction importantly, I thought that, well, this elevator is of sufficient size so that a wheelchair and a person can get in, but it's going to be tight if it's a motorized wheelchair and a person. So, what's the need, how does that relate to other things? So, we do get down to a level of detail and importance when it comes to, you know, the specifics. And then, we weigh them accordingly.
To answer your question, I guess, you know, you look at our high school in Stafford, it's ADA accessible. Elevators, no grade changes primarily. But then, we look at older buildings like Intermediate School, Middle School, those are the schools that we would need to make some upgrades to. Be fully compliant with the current code.
But anything that we touch will end up being compliant to today's standards.
Correct, yeah. That would be a building code requirement, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and back to Mr. Olson.
Back to me. So, you know, I'm looking at this document, our enrollment analysis, and this is, as you're, as you're looking at the agenda for this meeting, we're leading up to letter E, which is the budget, which is the, the big event, right? So, we're bit by bit, I'm only one of the small, smaller fights, Ted is the big fight. But we're leading up to trying to establish and understanding why we have a budget that we have. And so, I'll, I'll be brief with this, it's probably no different than what we've had over the past few years. Turn to the last page, page four. You can see, this is, this is the easiest page to see how enrollment has changed over the past number of years, especially since 2001. We've seen this bit by bit drop in enrollment in, in this district. It's not out of the ordinary, it's happening across the state. Even in Chittenden County now, I think that they're, they're losing, losing enrollment a little bit. I thought I read the other day, only South Burlington is the, the district that has shown a big increase in enrollment. But the, the state has been losing kids bit by bit and as, as we have as well. I don't think our, our drop is... I don't think our, our drop is as drastic as some places are, but you can see between like one and three percent decreases each year. So the reason we bring this to you is because we're, we have to consider, are we correctly staffed? Does our staffing ratios line up with what our kids' needs are? I'll go back to page two and you can see school by school what it looks like. Especially over the previous years. It's just a short window there, but you can see a decline in northeast, a slight decline in northwest. And then over on page five, sorry, page three. Intermediate school, intermediate school actually is sort of, it's strange, they're, they're holding, they're holding their own there. If you go back to twenty eighteen, all of this year, they're basically a little bit bigger, just slightly. Middle school, a little bit of a decline, but then holding steady or so for the last four years. And the high school has lost, lost kids a little bit over, over the last few years. And, you know, it reflects the, the drop in enrollment across the county. But also there is, over the last couple of years, three or four years, early college has been popular with a lot of kids. And so we lose twenty to twenty-five seniors every year that are, that want to take advantage of that. They can play in our sports teams, they can be part of our activities, but they don't count for us as, as an enrolled student. It becomes the college that they go to. So there's a bit of a decline there that's reflected in those numbers as well. So over the next, well, we've been talking about it for the last month and over the next month, we'll continue to talk about, are we at the right point, enrollment, staffing wise, that we match this, this slight decline? Sometimes you might have a decline of twenty kids across a district. That doesn't mean necessarily that you're going to reduce a position. We're, our aim is to make sure that we're maintaining programming, unless the board says differently. And so our, our goal is to maintain programming. But where we see reductions that make sense, we will look to make those reductions. So that's our goal and that's my lead. Unless you have any questions.
That you saw here, the enrollment of the district this year is down about one percent. You know, so what we've seen is a little bit of a flattening of the prior year's declines. But the other thing that we always watch really closely in terms of leading indicators, back on page two, those numbers that Bill was showing you for northeast and northwest, that's sort of the start of the enrollment pipeline, right? You can't, of course, have moves ins and outs, but when you look at the column for twenty-four to twenty-five, right at page two, you'll see that of the, the numbers for the, the six classes, the, the three grades per school, five of the six are lower than it is here. And in ten cases, those are down a little bit more than the decreases you're seeing among other schools. So we'll be watching this really carefully to see what happens in the coming years so that we have enough lead time to react accordingly. Thank you, thank you very much, but we're hoping to see some stabilization there because that, of course, then will have implications for the footprint of the schools as well as the program. So thank you very much for inviting me to spend a few minutes with you this evening, providing a budget update and an update on the fiscal landscape. Just my way of overview, this is going to be a general or broad brush overview. Next month, on December third, with the finance committee and of course the tent with the school board, we're, we'll be into the nitty gritty at that point. We're at a stage, probably the most important stage of our budget development right now. Where we're, you know, we've got, we've got the main boundaries as Glenn's presentation showed you. And we've done similar reviews with Patricia for IT and with Pam and with other directors. We're, we're bringing things into closer and finer detail now and over the next several weeks, we'll be pulling that all together. But for now, given the accuracy of what we have at this still early stage, I'm going to give you sort of a high level overview. And of course, if you want to drill down into any of those areas now as opposed to in a few weeks, we can do that. So let me go forward to page two. And as, you know, as you heard from, from Melissa and Kate regarding the guidelines for Stafford, the district administration has been trying to manage to a similar range of having total expenses go up, hopefully no more than four to five percent year over year, less if possible. If it, if we have an increase of five percent, that'll do you a budget of sixty-seven million dollars for twenty-six. If it's about three and a half percent, that'll put us in the sixty-six million dollar range. And based upon the discussions that we're having right now and the numbers that I've seen so far, I fully anticipate that even with the uncertainties we have, and we'll talk about a couple of those, the numbers that you're likely to see in December will probably be in that sixty-six to sixty-seven million dollar range. Unless you give us guidance to do some things differently than we're planning at this time. For those of you who have a chance to read one of the excellent articles that Sophia Buckley Clement writes for the Rutland Herald. She, she had an article in yesterday's paper covering the board meeting of Rutland Town in which they talked about a three point five percent increase for the Rutland Town school budget. Colin Fingin, who many of us know well, pressed them to try for a three percent increase. So people are obviously trying to be as sensitive and considerate as they can early on for the taxpayer burdens. As some of you know, Rutland Town, you know, they had a double digit tax rate increase last year. And so they're working to try and bring that down as best they can within their control. Personally, and I'm biased, I admit to being biased, but I think that Rutland City has been doing a, a very conscientious job with your support and with your guidance year by year. So honestly, while there's always work to do, I, I think that we're probably positioned fairly well compared to some of the school districts. Still, it will be challenging because, you know, as Melissa and Kate were, were pointing out, seventy percent to eighty percent of our budgets are compensation, employee related salaries and, and benefits. We've talked about the fact that we're in the process of continuing our negotiations for a, hopefully a mutually agreeable and satisfactory master agreement with, with our highly valued teachers. We're meeting with them this week. The teacher salary pool, I'm sorry, as we've talked about on various occasions, is roughly about twenty million dollars in round terms. So the salaries alone for our teachers represent close to thirty percent of the district's total budget. And therefore, as those negotiations go, that will be a significant driver. You, you're also well aware that medical plan costs are a significant part of our, part of our budget. Modest piece of good news, VHI has come out within the last several weeks and said, instead of a fifteen or a sixteen percent increase like we've seen in recent years, twenty-six will be only twelve percent. You know, and, and, but, but I will tell you, and for those of you who want more details, I'll be glad to talk with you outside of this meeting. But I'm very impressed with the work that VHI is doing. I sit on the board of Visbit. I'm one of their board of directors and Visbit, of course, is closely related to VHI. So I am privy to a lot of what's going on and I'm very satisfied with the, with the enterprising and creative work that they're doing to try and manage this within the scope of their requirements. But our medical plan costs alone, which are just under seven million dollars, are of course about ten percent of the total annual budget of, you know, sixty-four to sixty-five. What's also interesting is, so that's the medical plan costs. And, and the district pays, as you know, eighty percent of those premium costs, employees pay twenty percent. But there's another couple of million dollars of medical costs that we also pay because in addition to this, we pay more than a million and a half dollars for the district's contributions on behalf of employees to their health reimbursement accounts and to their health savings arrangements, HRA, HSA. We pay about six hundred thousand dollars annually for dental costs. So when you add all those things up, it's really nine million dollars or fourteen percent of our total budget. The other components of the medical costs are not going up by the twelve percent. It's going up by less. So that gives us a little bit of inflationary relief. We're hoping, we're targeting, as we've described earlier, for what you might term a level service budget, which means continuing with the same quality and level of programming, which means hopefully the same level of staffing as we have this year. We budgeted fiscal twenty-five at four hundred and ninety-five full-time employees, including teachers and everybody else. We're continuing this planning effort, hoping that we can maintain that level of service. However, as we get deeper and more precisely into the cost estimates, if it seems that we are unable to achieve the sta, the cost targets of four to five percent, and if we believe that there are no other places to look, then when we speak with you in December, we'll advise you if possibly some modest staffing reductions might need to be considered. That's an option that we hope to avoid and we'll turn over all the rest of the rocks we can find first. But so far, we're assuming it's level. Glenn, you know, he's spoken to you about the building's cost and transportation. We, we came to Glenn early saying, look, we were very fortunate to utilize ninety-nine point nine nine, whatever the percent was of Estor funding. Did a lot of great upgrades. A lot of school districts are still looking at doing the HVAC, you know, and other infrastructure work that we utilized our Estor funds to do. So we're hoping to, you know, manage these costs down a little bit in twenty-six where it doesn't compromise safety, you know, regulatory compliance and the like. And then, of course, we've talked about student enrollment. Those metrics are looking relatively good, relatively stable compared to not that long ago. And if that's the case, that'll be very, very important for our funding because of course the AOE uses the metrics that we provide, some of which, you know, Bill has shared and reviewed with you, to calculate the long-term weighted average daily membership, which is the, the new Act one twenty-seven version of what we've known for so many years as equalized pupils. And that determines your average cost per student, hence your funding and all the other wonderfully exciting details that you're already familiar with. So any questions or comments about those initial budget targets and metrics? Okay, well, we'll move on then. And if you have any questions or suggestions, let me know. Let's talk briefly about the fiscal landscape. And some of you or most of you may be aware of a lot of these statistics already. But, you know, Governor Scott has sent a couple of letters this fall already to school superintendents. In those letters, he's mentioned that the Ed Fund took sixty-nine million dollars of its balances to help pay down the tax rates for this year. That's always described as a one-time event, or at least even if it's an event to be repeated, not to be counted upon. It's not guaranteed. And of course, that's sixty-nine million dollars now that won't be available for twenty-six. In spite of that drawdown to help mitigate tax rates, and some of that was done through working on the yield, as probably you've read or heard about, you know, about half of the schools and the towns in Rutland County had tax rate increases of ten percent or more. And clearly, even in a great environment, that's not sustainable over any kind of long term. Our tax rate increase was six percent, more than we wanted. The only silver lining to that that I might offer you, for those who can recall, is that that six percent increase was from a dollar fifty-eight in twenty-four to a dollar sixty-seven this year. But the year before in twenty-three, it was a dollar fifty-seven. So we were basically flat for two years and then we had last year's increase. We're averaging about three percent per year the last two years. And, and then I've got a new piece of information for you there because we don't, we haven't talked much in the past about the fact that, you know, there's a partial offset for many people, many homestead owners through income-based tax credits. And what's important is that Vermont-wide, about seventy percent of the households that own their own homes, about seventy percent of those households receive some form of this tax credit. And it might ra, it might run from a maximum of two percent of your income to a hybrid to being phased out. If you typically are a household that makes a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year or more, once you're above that level, you don't qualify for any of these tax credits. But that fifty percent number is there because if you look at US Census data for Rutland County, I don't have it on a city basis, but countywide, about seventy-two percent of households own their home, which means, of course, about twenty-eight percent of the households in our county are renters. Of course, the renters are not going to benefit from the income-based tax credits against homestead taxes. That's factored into their rent. But of that seventy-two percent of the homeowners, about seventy percent are getting some form of this tax-based credit. And seventy percent times seventy percent, it's about fifty percent of the households here in Rutland County or Rutland City are getting some form of credit. That's not necessarily positive. It's just a matter of saying it's a little bit of a reduction in, in the pain. But fifty percent is, is not too bad. I mean, I wish it was higher, but that's a pretty substantial percentage. We're looking forward within a couple of weeks to the annual December one letter that comes out from the tax commissioner. Very exciting letter last year, which set off a firestorm of taxpayer concern when it included an unfortunate estimate that homestead taxes were going to be expected to go up by eighteen and a half percent, which fortunately they didn't do for a number of reasons. It was based, it's based always on very preliminary estimates. Obviously, the board boards approve budgets. We had a person come into our information, our voter information session the night before town meeting day in March this year, who was upset and asking us, why are my taxes going up eighteen percent, you know, this coming year? And of course, we said, we're not. Where'd you get that number? But a number like that, when it's plastered out as it was in December, is seared into people's gray matter and it's almost like they don't hear anything else after that. So communication and managing that will be, will be very important. Other aspects of the fiscal landscape that I would highlight for you on the next page, which are actually even more important than what we just discussed, is the new commission on the future of public education in Vermont, which many of us are following as best we can. They're required by law, by the yield law, to release their preliminary findings within a few weeks on December fifteenth. And these preliminary findings, of course, are going to reflect what they've learned and what they've concluded from the listen and learn tours that have been going on. Some of us have, have attended those sessions. And then, of course, we have one year from December of this year to December of next year, when the AOE will be required to release its final report. And the reason why the legislature charged them to issue their final report by December of twenty twenty-five was with the idea that they'll come forward with recommendations that the legislature might then be able to act upon in calendar twenty-six. That's, that's some time from now. I, I hope that if they do that, they're a little bit more careful than they were when, when tinkering with Act one twenty-seven, when they made last minute changes like, let's put in a five percent cap on tax rate increases and then blew up the budgets for so many schools and systems, contributing significantly to one-third of them failing earlier this year. But, you know, that's, we'll just have to wait and see what happens. I, when I talk to my fellow business managers across the state, and I get the opportunity to do that with Tim Smith, our controller, when we, when we participate in monthly state meetings, is a, a lot of concern among business managers. And of course, we're by nature conservative people, but a lot of budgetary concern, a lot of legislative concern, a lot of voter uncertainty. So there's a lot to keep in mind. But I believe optimistically that communication, communication, communication. And preferably clear communication and preferably consistent communication. So we're working with, with Patricia and with many others who are in the administration directly involved in and very talented when it comes to communications and of course, following directions from Bill and Bianca to say, okay, how can we keep this messaging clear and succinct? And, and not that we're trying to persuade people to believe one thing versus another, but rather we're trying to put relevant facts out there that we believe will be important to people to make their decisions, you know, based upon what they think is right, but at least to get the key facts out there.
I, I just had a quick comment on that and I kind of know the answer, but I want you to say it out loud on television.
Say it out loud.
Because we're ramping up for local elections in March and the budget's obviously going to be the big thing. and the budget's obviously going to be the big thing, but everybody wants answers. So it sounds like you're working on messaging and getting the messaging out, and clear messaging. So my, my question is, or my suggestion is, if anybody has questions about the budget, who do they reach out to, to ask their question and get clear information? Can't people who might be running for boards or concerned citizens who care about the budget and want to have actual information, where do they go to get that clear?
Well, I'll defer to my, to my colleagues to say that. I will, I will tell you that on my windowsill, I have a coffee mug that I admire every day that says, "Keep calm and trust in your superintendent." Not to put Bill on the spot, but, you know, typically, if I have an important question, I don't mess around with the people in the middle of an organization, I just like to go right to the top. Okay? And the same with Bianca. I will tell you, though, that, you know, my, my number is very public. And I have gotten, and I welcome it, I get calls from taxpayers, I get calls from members of the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen, and we welcome all of that. In fact, as part of that, you know, we typically volunteer a couple of times per year working with, with Mayor, Mayor Dungus and Mary Markowski to say, "When, once the school board has approved what they think is a reasonable budget, we'll go over and talk with them to share that information." So I would say whoever you can find that's going to answer the phone, reach out because we're hopefully working from the same sheet of music. But, but more questions are better. Because if it's on anybody's mind, it's going to be on somebody else's mind.
Exactly.
Can I just add to that? And then, so one of the things that came up at the VSBA conference I went to, I think, two weeks ago, was holding coffee clutches in December, January, and February, where we would have, like, two of us at a time would meet people, or we'd promote meeting people out at, you know, at the different establishments that serve coffee, or whatever we decide. And we could just, you know, have like a sign-up sheet. So there's always two of us, and Ted and Bill, and have one in the evening, have one on a Saturday, have one in the daytime, and maybe that will be helpful for people.
That's a great idea.
More to come on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went to, oh, I'm sorry, you were.
You're all going to take turns, but Ted and I are going to be awfully teary.
If I could just interject real quickly. So I'm a, I'm a great admirer of the communication programs that are implemented by several of our neighboring school systems, among them Slate Valley. And they've done the kinds of things that Kathy was talking about. So several weeks ago, I got one of their flyers that said, "We're going to have one such communication session over at Castleton Elementary." So even though I'm not a Castleton resident, I went over because I just wanted to see how it was going. Unfortunately, the superintendent didn't mind me participating, I promise not to interrupt. But it was extremely well done. And they had, as I think all of their sessions are, they had, the superintendent was there, the business manager was there, two board members, a couple of teachers, and then there were about six residents, okay? So it was almost like the board and administration have, then you could say, "Well, what, that's a small group." But the people who did come to ask questions were very, very interesting. And so I look at that as six votes at a time, you know? Who then might reach out and talk to six more people. And so if we can do that, you're providing some clarity and assurance, and you're dedic, and you're saying, "Hey, look, if we're asking our teachers to work as hard as they work, and the administration to work as hard as it works, and everybody else is involved in the process, the least we can do is make ourselves available." And, yeah, I'm strongly committed to doing that in any format. And what's really impressive, what Brooke Olson Farrell did, and Cheryl Scarsell, or the superintendent of business managers, which I would endeavor to do, is they went in, they had the ability to project some information, but there was basically no script. It's like, "Just ask your questions, and we'll answer them as best we can." And doesn't take long for that kind of conversation to get rolling. So it was, I, I was so impressed, I would love to be able to do that.
That's cool. Yeah, that's cool.
I would go on a limb to say that if somebody wants the information about the budget, seeing how we're in the throes of this discussions, if they were just tuning into our school board meeting here for the last twenty minutes, if you've been listening, you've been getting a wealth of information already. And so to have, I think, just tuning in on our school board meetings, when Ted has his, his talks. I, I feel like, yeah, if you've been listening for the last, you know, twenty minutes or so, you've, you've gotten a lot of information, detailed information, that we will continue to report every time we're here. So I think that's a good resource for people.
Charlene, to your point, I appreciate you saying that very much, but to your point, maybe we should give some consideration to promoting or advertising or somehow marketing the fact that come December third and December tenth, we're likely to get into, you know, more of those nitty-gritty issues. And so if you're interested, you're welcome to come, it's an open session, or you're welcome to listen, or you're welcome to listen later if you can on that particular night. Maybe we talk that up a little bit.
Yeah.
That'd be a great idea.
It's a good resource to get.
Get as much mileage as we can out of what we do.
I think it's convenient for people to.
And, you know, like I've always said to all of you, if there's a question or they're concerned, you want to hear about it sooner rather than later. Because, you know, at the last minute, it's a little hard to react. But if you bring it forward, we'll do our best to understand and, and answer the question.
I think to that point, and just reminding people, what channel is Peg TV? Like, like spoon, spoon-feed the information, right? Like, in terms of.
It was good for you to bring it up now.
Yes, it's been going in my brain, this is the thing that we need to be talking about.
So if they're tuning in, they're going to get that information, whether they like it or not.
Exactly.
It's on YouTube.
It's true.
Or maybe can we set up something, I don't know, I'm just brainstorming with you right now, is maybe we set something up to say, "And if you have a question that you want to have answered, send it to X Y Z email if you can't attend." And that way, everybody, and then what we would, I would commit to say, every single question that gets sent to that, we'll get an answer. Because if you're going to invite the questions, you've got to provide the feedback. So, okay, thank you for that. I think we should give that some thought. And, you know, in terms of the spoon-feed, I mean, that's a really important point because everybody is so busy, they've got so many things that they're doing for their regular life that it's hard to pick up on those facts. So if we can help people dial and tune into things, so much the better. Okay, those pieces of good news. You know that I'm a, a fan and student of inflation statistics, and because there are as many inflation statistics out there as you can imagine. But two of my favorite ones, of course, are the Personal Consumption Expenditure Index, the PCE. And I like that, not because it's a low number right now, but because it's one that the Federal Reserve follows very closely in setting its monetary policy. And as this chart shows, as of August, which is the most recent data available today, and more data's coming soon, that fell to two-point-two percent year over year, August twenty-three to August twenty-four. And more importantly than the number, of course, is that trend. And the same thing with the more typical Consumer Price Index. This is the national, this is not the New England index. But again, year over year, two-point-four percent. CPI will always tend to be a little higher than PCE because CPI puts more weight on rental and household costs. And for reasons I won't bore you with tonight, those have been higher and trending down more slowly, but they are coming down. So the, the good news here is, for things other than healthcare insurance and a few big-ticket items that we talked about, at least in other areas, inflation is tending down, and we're building that assumption into our forecast. And of course, the, the poster child for that are Glenn Scott's wood pellets, now two dollars and fifty cents a ton. We'll take those anytime we can get those savings. So then, just briefly, and I appreciate your patience tonight, you've seen a chart like this before. I've updated the numbers slightly. When I first showed you this reconciliation, which basically starts with the current budget of sixty-three point eight million and shows you some change factors going to, you know, where we're probably going to end up. The last time you saw this chart, the medical plan costs were going to be up a million dollars. That was based on fifteen, sixteen percent. Now it'll probably add about eight hundred thousand, based on twelve percent. And that's not based on, that's not based on dental costs or, or some of the other costs. That's just based on the medical plan premium cost. Why, why doesn't include increased dental costs, Ted? Well, that's because VHI, among the different things that it has done, said, "You know what? We, we understand the pain that districts and employees are feeling. We believe we've got the reserves so that we can hold dental costs flat from twenty-five to twenty-six, so they're not assessing us an increase." So, you know, people are doing what they can. Other employee compensation, I mentioned to you, compensation, yeah, I mentioned to you, we're, we're targeting for a flat service with four-hundred-and-ninety-five FTEs. Hopefully, we'll be able to maintain that. Frankly, some of it will depend upon where the negotiations with our teachers go. You know, I'm cautiously optimistic, but there's a range of costs in there, just depending on, you know, I don't have a crystal ball when it comes to that. Lower census block grant, that's basically increasing our costs a little bit. And then going forward, again, you know, we've got a hundred thousand up here, a hundred thousand down there. Food services probably going to be moderating because we rebid that. So right now, when we add up the big pluses and minuses that we know about, we're probably expecting the school's budget to increase somewhere between four, four and a half percent. That would be your sixty-four, sixty-six million and change, to hopefully no more than a five percent increase, bringing you to the sixty-seven that I mentioned earlier. And we've got a lot more deep dives to do, but based upon the work that everybody in the administration has done already, I'm confident that we've got the information we need to bring forward a very solid, detailed budget through November December. We're on the track there. And of course, as I'm meeting with you again, we will have that December first Tax Commissioner letter, which will give us a little bit more insight and allow us to give you more context when we meet the next time. So with that, I say thank you again for your time. And if I can answer any more questions for you this evening, I'd be glad to try and do that. Thank you for the good ideas.
Thanks, Ted. You're so thorough, thank you.
It's a pleasure, and, you know, we just want to get to that place.
Somebody's creator should come up with some sort of name for the coffee talks that are related to Bill and Ted's.
Excellent adventure.
Caffeinated adventure or something, like, I'm not creator, but I think it's there, like, it's, there's something there with Bill and Ted's.
Excellent Ted Talks with Bill. Bill and Ted Talks.
We're going to make it work.
Ted's Excellent Talks. This is why I deal in numbers, huh?
Okay, so we have committee reports, Karen, Policy Committee.
Yes, the Policy Committee met on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. The agenda was approved by consensus. There was no member of the public to offer any public contact, comment. We reviewed Policies Sixty-One Ten, which is the goals and objectives of the Personnel System Policy. Reviewed Policy Sixty-Two Fourteen, which is substitute teachers. Policy Sixty-Four Ten, Employee Legal Defense. And all of these have been sent for first reading. Reviewed Policy Sixty-Four Twenty-One, which is jury duty. We also reviewed Policies Sixty-Four Twenty, which involves leaves of absence. The committee tabled this discussion until, on this policy, until the next meeting. Next committee meeting will be November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at five P.M. And the meeting adjourned at six P.M.
So could we have a motion to move these policies to second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any unfinished business?
I'm sorry, did we discuss the guest teacher pay, or were we?
That was in the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Missed it.
Any new business? Yes.
I just wanted to mention that, and probably people are aware, but a former superintendent of the Rollin Public Schools, Richard Brothers, passed away in Florida. So I just want to send condolences to his family. He was very well-liked and respected when he was here.
Very sad. So thank you for remembering him. Are there any business? Okay. I entertain the motion to go into executive session for the purpose of consideration of contractual matters, the premature release of information regarding those subjects, which would place the board at a substantial disadvantage. We'd like to include Bianca McKean, Ted Plomenis, and Bill Olson.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.